Today is Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. I'd like to begin the meeting by welcoming you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Brian, if we could have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Auger.
Present.
Mr. Draplin.
Present.
Mr. Ritchie.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
And Mr. Zarek.
Here.
Great. We have all members present in their court quorum. We have an agenda that's at the front of the building here in front of the room tonight, as well as published online. We have three cases on the agenda. Gentlemen, if we could have a review of the agenda and any modifications, changes?
I believe one of the cases has been removed from the.
Number one.
Item 12.
So case number 25-012 has been removed from tonight's agenda, and I think it's going to be scheduled at a future meeting.
Yes.
So we have one change to the agenda is removing case number 25-12. Any other changes?
Move to approve the agenda with that correction. Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. So the agenda is fairly straightforward. We'll have a public comment. That's an opportunity for anybody online or in the room to address the board and therefore the community for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Well, then, next order of business is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, and we'll move right into new business. Is there anybody in the room tonight that would like to address anything that is not on the agenda? This is the public comment portion. Seeing no one in the room, Brian, doesn't look like that's anybody else online. So we have no public comment. We'll close that. We have, again, no unfinished business. We'll move right into new business. We have two cases tonight. What I'll do is I'll read those into the record. We'll go through what the applicant is seeking in terms of variance or deviations from ordinance. We'll invite the applicant to come up to the podium. The applicant, as well as anybody else that speaks, when you come up to the podium, if you could give us your name and address so that we get it correctly into the record. You could also sign the signup sheet by the door so we get the spelling of your name correctly. We appreciate that. We'll ask some questions back and forth from the applicant to try and understand the application. We'll bring it back to the board and have any conversation or additional questions. We'll open it up for public comment, and at that point, we'll ultimately seek to make some type of a decision or direction in that case. Before we move into case number 25-013, I would like to recuse myself from this case. Recently, I had an occasion to be before the Board of Trustees for an issue regarding the ZBA. This applicant, who lives in my neighborhood, was online and spoke on my behalf, and I just want to present that to the board. Seek to recuse myself for just any appearance of, you know, conflict of interest here.
I know, and I'm not familiar with your bylaws, so does that require a motion and approval by the?
It's a board decision. It's, in other words, I offered to recuse myself. I seek to recuse myself. It's ultimately someone would have to make a motion to.
My comment would be that I don't really see that as being a significant conflict of interest, but if you're uncomfortable with it, I'm willing to support that.
Yeah, I'd like to because it was a public event at the Board of Trustees. I think it's just.
I understand, but I think it's very superficial. I'm not concerned about your ability to be objective, but if you're uncomfortable, I'm supporting.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I'd like to do that.
I'd make a motion then to have you abstain from participation and loading on that file number.
I'll support.
We have motion. We have support. Brian, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Auger.
Yes.
Mr. Draplin.
I guess I'll abstain.
Mr. Ritchie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Zarek.
Great.
No. Actually, you can vote on that.
Okay. Mr. Zarek voted no, so that would be three to one in one abstention. Thanks. You know. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Auger, who's the vice chair, to run this case. I'll step back in for the second case, 2014. I'll just step to the back of the room. Thank you.
I'll read the case. Do you want me to move over, Brian, or?
No, no.
Okay. Case number 25-013, Austin Teaberry, petitioner requesting six total variances, two from 9689 Pine Knob Road, one hundred-foot lot width variance, and two, a 175.5-foot, one-to-four ratio variance from both section 4.09D and table 4.09, four total variances on 9861 Pine Knob Road, one hundred-foot lot variance, two, a 1.9 lot area variance, three, a 45-foot side yard setback variance for the existing home, and four, a 375-foot, one-to-four ratio variance from section 4.09D, table 4.09, in order to do a lot split in combination with property to the south, 9689 and 9681 Pine Knob Road parcels, 08-03-477-002 and -003, it's our 1R residential. Is the petitioner present?
Before we go any farther, can we just double-check the addresses? What are the correct addresses?
They're 9681 and 9689.
Okay. Because in the reading just above, it was 9861. The eight and the six are transposed in the middle of the paragraph?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So it's 9681?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way I'm hearing it, 9681.
Parcel numbers are correct, so it's legal.
Good eye.
Yeah. As you can see, these were very complicated.
Do we have a petitioner now? Uh, pardon me? Do we have a petitioner? The petitioner present. Oh, okay. Please come up and state your case.
Hi there. My name is Austin Tewksbury. I live at 9689 Pine Knob Road. I'm here on behalf of myself and my neighbor, Jack Overbaugh. Jack's not able to make it tonight as he works second shift, but is in full support of the lot split combination that we're seeking. Do you want to start with asking questions, or should I read a statement, or?
What are you trying to do?
I guess start with your statement and tell us what you want.
Sure. So first off, thanks for hearing my case this evening. I think that, I'd like to start with, I think that many of the variances, and when I first saw the yellow card in the mail, I was quite shocked as well. Asking for six variances, I know is quite out of the ordinary. But I think that most of the variance requests are due to both lots being non-conforming R1R lot sizes. In addition to that, a few reasons, I think that this lot split combination would be appropriate. Approving these variances for the lot split combination would bring my neighbor Jack's property more in line with the one-to-four lot width length ratio as outlined by the state zoning rules. It would also negate a previous side yard setback variance granted by the township for the accessory building in my backyard. This is a piece of property that I already maintain, but if the lot split combination is approved, I could further improve the property trimming and removing overgrown bushes and weeds, something I think that my other neighbors would appreciate as well. Having land on the southern canal would also allow me to assist with lake weed control shared by the other neighbors, including aerators, fountains, and chemical treatment each year, which my neighbor Jack does not currently participate in. And then, although the primary benefit is to my neighbor and myself, Jack, or I'm sorry, my neighbor Jack and myself, approval of the lot split combination will help my other neighbors as well due to improved views and cost sharing of lake maintenance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you folks have.
You were before us. We just received the minutes. You were before us twice this board, and all these, not all of the members were here when you came before the board for the accessory building. One was in January 6th of 2021, and one was August 4th of 2021. I haven't had a chance to review. There was a lot of discussion, and you had to come back. But when I, in the minutes, it said you were going to tear down the, and move the structure that was at the south side of the structure, and I noticed that's still there.
Which one are you referring to?
It's attached to your house evidently at the south side. I brought it up in the discussion part that, and these aren't absolute minutes either. They're a capsule of.
Which meeting are we looking at now?
I'm looking at January 6th, 2021, last page.
Okay, that was the one that they postponed in January?
Yeah.
And then, so the actual action they took was on the other one?
Yes.
Okay.
But it was all part of the discussion.
Sure.
And him coming back and why he agreed to.
I think I do recall that.
Evidently, the building officials missed that.
I think, I do recall it being brought up in the first appearance here, but I think on the final approval, I don't know if that was included in it or not.
I'm kind of at a loss. Brian, can you explain so that we all know what he's actually trying to do here?
So basically, the two lots go, let me put the other aerial out. It's a little easier to see. So the two lots are very long in nature, and what he is proposing to do is essentially cut this lot right here and then adjoin this lot to the rest of what he's going to take. So basically, he's taking the lake frontage, you know, this half right here. He's going to leave this as one lot.
So then that front parcel, the neighbors won't have any riparian rights into the lake?
I believe so, yeah.
And that's the neighbor that's not here?
Correct.
So could you stick with that one for a minute? I guess I've got it up here the same thing. So what happens to the neighbor's lot with the house on it? The house stays?
Yes, sir.
That's a curiosity to me. Why is he giving up his lakefront?
I think that, I mean, if you look at the house, I think it's just kind of become too much for him. It's not a piece of property that he really uses.
Oh, it's not a full-time residence?
He is.
But that portion of the property he's not using?
I mean, to be honest, I basically maintained his whole property for him.
What's that?
I said, to be honest, I basically maintained his whole property for him.
Okay. I found the whole thing quite confusing, and I like to think I'm reasonably clever, and maybe it's just that there are so many variances. I don't quite, I don't at all know what you're trying to accomplish and what we're supposed to be doing for you. And we have a standard, because these are dimensional variances, that you're supposed to be demonstrating to us in a clear and concise manner what your practical difficulties are. So could you present this in that way? In other words, what is it you're trying to accomplish, and why does there need to be so many variances?
So why I'm requesting the variance, I think the root of the cause is that.
Not why you're trying, what is the goal?
The goal is to really just have ownership of that back lot.
Okay, why does that require variances?
For the lot split combination.
Yeah.
I think currently both of our lots are zoned R1R, so the setbacks, the lot area requirements, none of that.
So we'll be creating, the front lot of his will become a non-conforming lot?
No, all the lots are currently non-conforming.
On the plat, you'll notice, if I had to bring up the plat, it's not unusual for the lot sizes to be longer than narrow auto-racial.
You mean deep?
Deep.
Right.
For what the new ordinance is. Back when this plat was made, you can look up and down the street, they're all.
I hear full line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
So you're not changing any structures at this joint?
No, and I have no plans to build anything back there. It's strictly just for lot split combination.
So I'm still at a loss. So the problem is that because of the nature of the lots, you can't do the split.
Correct.
Brian?
Yep.
That right, Brian?
I think that's, I think you're analyzing.
So it seems like we're stretching and pulling and pushing to make this happen, and I'm not sure what the practical difficulty is. In other words, the split is something he's requesting. It's not like he's requesting to do a building, right? So I don't, I don't see where the inequity is.
Brian, with this, as many variances as what's requested, looking at the aerial, and they're pretty close to being pretty accurate. The neighbor's house is almost right on the property line, on the south property.
Yeah.
So if something like this was approved, they wouldn't have to come back before this board to make any changes to that house.
Yeah.
Basically.
What I try to do is make sure that the lots are whole, so, you know, that the house never got, that property, he never received variances in the past. He's not changing the house, but, you know, in order to make the property whole, so if it ever gets to sale, mortgage companies sometimes get a little skirmish about nonconformities. So this makes it essentially whole. And that's just something that we've done for many years now.
The result, we've done for many years?
Yeah, we have done that.
Trying to make it whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, except that isn't it true that the remaining lot with the house on it will be even more non-conforming?
That's true, but, you know, if still with, there's a structure on there, we want to at least cover our bases on the notice to make sure that these are identified as.
No surprises.
Okay, well.
I see that some of the variances are going to that house.
They are somewhere tied to the house, and.
That isn't even part of the application.
What is the accessory structure used for now that we approved?
Mostly storage, recreation, storing kayaks, things like that.
It's not finished in any way?
It's got a workshop in it that I use for just like, like arts and crafts woodworking, stuff like that.
I think I'm following what Mr. Wallace is bringing up, and I guess the other thing that's bothering me is the other homeowner is not here, and I'm wondering if the value of the other homeowner's property goes down because of this request. And I'm not sure if that's a good thing for the community or for future homeowners, I don't know.
Yeah, I think most certainly the value goes down, and it's no longer lakefront. It's also even more, it's, it's a.
It's a bit of a.
It's no longer lakefront in a lakefront neighborhood. So it's just the fact that you're taking square footage away, A, and then B, taking away the frontage, so the value's got to go down.
I don't, did he sign off on the application?
Yes, and I mean, I know we're not supposed to bring up, you know, outside agreements, but, you know, that was obviously something that him and I had discussed and, you know, came to an agreement on.
On which, I'm sorry?
Why won't this thing scroll? I don't do that. No, 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 no. It would take it out of character from the neighborhood of what was planned there in the original plat, because all the parcels were triangular-shaped, pie-shaped. They've all got some lakefront or.
Mr. Wallace, the split application, which is not in the package, requires both parties to sign off. This one, the ZBA application, just has Mr. Tewksbury, yeah, but the split application would have required the other property owner to sign it.
And then, what, you administratively rejected the split application?
Yeah, yeah, the split committee, which is myself, building official, and the assessor.
I think at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public and see if there's anybody here that likes to voice anything. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this case? Is there anybody online? No?
No.
Okay.
There is, there is one person.
Oh.
Brian, you made the comment just a little bit ago that we've done this in the past before. Can you?
Not necessarily about splits and combos, but.
Can you elaborate what this is?
No, on variance requests, sometimes, you know, I always go back and look to see if there's any history of other variances, because, you know, a lot of, a lot of variances that are, they're going for a certain objective, but, you know, maybe there's lot width issues or lot area issues, so I try to notice those as well just to kind of make the whole project whole, so he's not building out a non-conforming lot of, you know, a lot that's non-conforming. So if you approve those variances, sometimes they're just, they're simple variances because he didn't create the lot.
Right.
You know, so by not creating the lot, it's not really his fault that he's on, you know, I'm not going to use this example, but.
But we are here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a lot that was created before Mr. Tewksbury ever bought it, but in this instance, he's essentially creating two new lots because they're going to have different parcel IDs, new parcel IDs, if the split were approved. So in essence, that creates two new lots with two new parcel IDs, which means there's, those all have to be brought into conformance with the ordinance.
But they won't be. We'll be getting variances instead.
Yeah.
And there's the comment in the application, this should be rezoned, so.
Yeah, but, you know, by approving those variances, it essentially makes it a legal lot.
Somewhat of illegal fiction, but okay. Right? I mean, technically illegal, but, you know, I'm not sure it's the right thing. Sure?
Can you come up to the podium, please, and state your name and address? Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, I see your point, but. I do. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
David Henderson, 9890.
David Henderson, 9890 Pine Knob Road. So, this is the first that I'm hearing about this, so it's off the top of my head. I appreciate everything that you're doing in terms of thinking this through very carefully. The nature of the lakefront community, the nature of the large lot properties that are surrounding it, all need to be factored into this decision. I lived on Lakeville Lake for 20 years and watched many of the properties go through a similar process of gradually being developed. And if I'm thinking of the property, you've done a marvelous job with what you're doing. But I just want to caution you to make certain that the property that is left as a non-riparian property also reflects the general neighborhood or community. I don't have any specific recommendations for you about that. I put it in your hands to make a good decision on this. And I understand wanting to have the lakefront under the control and help with the preservation of the waterfront and the water quality, and all of those issues are valid too. So, there's a strong pull to try to find in favor of this. And yet, I want to make sure that the general neighborhood is also left with properties that are fairly consistent with one another. And I'm not a riparian. I'm across the road from the lake, so I don't have a vested interest in the lake, one way or the other. Unless you can cut down all the trees so I can see it, you know? No, 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 don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. My own thoughts on it is that... I'm going to speak quite frankly. Is this an elderly gentleman that lives next door to you?
No, he's working the second shift. How elderly could he be?
Well, you know, somebody... In some time, this house is going to sell. And it's not going to bring any amount of money with no riparian rights, because it's centrally on the water. There's not a lot of land there. There was an awful lot of discussion on... By the board to let him put that accessory structure at the back. That's why...
What, two meetings?
And they had to bring in a survey, I believe. I can't remember all the discussion that went on. But I myself, I'm not in favor of change in the neighborhood for this. It's to no value. If the gentleman wants, he can let him use the back of his property as much as he's using it anyway.
And maintaining it.
Yeah.
It puts me in mind of El Gonquin and all that up on the north side of Walters Lake, where, you know, that was divided in the 1910s or 19s and 20s. And it's all those little lots. And what people there are doing is desperately trying to assemble lots to make for bigger building sites. And here we are, looking at, through these half dozen variances, allowing this neighborhood to be chopped up more.
That's just my opinion. Ken, any more discussion?
No, I think in agreement with both of you. I'm just wondering, you know, unless petitioner can come up with a more hardship reason, I don't think I'm interested... I don't think I could support this. And I don't know if it's worth trying to clean up the issues that are non-conforming and approve those, or we can't just selectively shop and pick the dimensional variances that are wrong right now, can we, or...
Well, it's with the split being created that those numbers change, except for lot width.
So, the one thing, Ken, is, and I keep trying to focus myself on this, is this isn't a hardship. It's practical difficulties, because it's a dimensional variance. So, what are the practical difficulties that are in the way of the goal?
I understand.
And the first thing is, what is the goal? Well, the goal is just to get more lakefront. It's not that I got to shoehorn a house onto a particular lot, or because it's a weird lot. Like a lot of the variances we see, the goal here is just to get more lakefront. It's sort of self-created, which doesn't fit with one of our requirements. And I guess I just don't... I'm worried about this chopping up direction, so to speak, of the neighborhood. And I just don't see that it fits within the standards that we're supposed to be looking at. I agree. Brian?
If I could say one thing, I guess my only question as we speak of hardship, I think the hardship I'm presenting is not, you know, necessarily even the dimensions of the lot split combination, but more so that the two lots we live on are not conforming. If they were zoned more appropriately, would any of these variances even be necessary?
Well, if they were zoned more appropriately, would you be here?
No, and I think that's my point. So, if you look at any of the neighbors to the north...
But then the question is, why is that zoning more appropriate? It's only more appropriate because it would allow you to do what you want to do.
Well, no, I'm saying, right now, I'm zoned R1R, and it specifies a minimum lot size of three acres, which none of my neighbors have. It specifies 100-foot side yard setbacks, which our properties are only 100-foot wide. So, I'm just saying that the nature of the zoning that we have on our properties right now is the hardship. I don't think if we were zoned, like, I think I put in my application, I think it was RB...
R1B.
R1B. I don't think that any of these variances would be necessary. And the R1B zoning is much more applicable to mine and my neighbors' lots. Just size-wise, lot width-wise, natural setbacks from the structures that are already there. So, I think that's the hardship that I'm asking you focus on.
But the township knew when it zoned your property. And township had some reason. You speculate about what that is. But knowing that those lots were there, the township said, "We're going to zone R1R anyway." Maybe because of redevelopment concerns. I don't know.
Other lots in that area too? Other lots in that area too? It's not just those four or five?
Right.
You're just looking at a snapshot of the area too.
But I think I included the plat book, and it's pretty much everything on Pine Knob is R1R. So, it was almost like it was a blanket zone.
I guess the petitioner is talking about his hardship. But the reasons he's giving is really as if he was going to build something, then he would need the variances. If he's not going to do anything, there's really no reason for the variance other than to try and bring the lot whole, like you're saying. So, I mean, the variances are really to make the lot whole if it was sold in the future, not for any activity that's going on. Like you said, he just wants more lakefrontage, which isn't a reason to give a variance of anything, so...
Yeah.
I think the variances are required for the... Whether I'm building something or not, I think it's required for the lot split.
But the split isn't required.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Ritchie's trying to say.
Would somebody like to make a motion in this case?
I might move to deny the request for the six variances in... What's the case number?
25-013.
25-012.
Yes.
013.
Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not persuaded... Because I'm not persuaded that there is a practical difficulty, much less a hardship, with the property in that the request is merely to support a lot split in recombination to give more furnished to one property. Yeah, because I'm concerned it creates inconsistencies for the zoning neighborhood. As I said before, chopping up the lots, in a sense, and making them even more non-conforming. Thank you.
Would support that. Yeah, motion and support. Any more discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Zurich?
Yes.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppich?
I'm sorry, you've been denied.
It's okay. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Eppich, if you can hear us, would you please return to the meeting?
If you can hear us, join us.
Yeah. I'll see if I can find you.
Come on back, Jim. I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Appreciate having a rejoin the meeting. Thank you, Alan. I will call the second case, case 25-014. Mr. Ajil Ashamani, petitioner, requesting five variances. The first is a .04-foot yard, front yard setback from Paramus. The second is a 1.3-foot front yard variance from Middle Lake Road, both from Section 4.06D of our ordinance. And that's based on the existing home. The next set of three variances are in relationship to the garage, the existing garage, a variance from Section 5.06A4 in order to have an accessory structure, in this case, a garage in front of the home as it relates to Middle Lake Road. The second is 25.3-foot front yard setback variance for an accessory structure. The third is a 2.2-foot variance structure distance... I'm sorry. A 2.2-foot accessory structure distance variance from the home. In other words, the distance between the garage and the home, all from Section 5.06A4 in order to remodel a home already located on the property, which is at 6208 Paramus, which is in the R1A, single-family residential portion of our home. So, again, it's a total of five variances. Three of them specific to the existing home, three of them specific... Two of them specific to the garage, and then one related to the distance between the existing garage and the home. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Andrew North on behalf of Akil Al Shamari, who stands by right. This is a non-conforming lot. It was built before the current ordinances were enacted. Mr. Akil purchased the home last October out of tax foreclosure. The house was in pretty serious disrepair. For those of you that can visualize where the property is at, this is the house that is the last house before you get to the junior high school. So, if you come in off Middle Lake Road, it sits on the corner of Paramus and Middle Lake Road. I know Akil's been adjusting to the school being back in session with the traffic that's out there now. So, his plan is, as I said, the interior of the house was in severe disrepair. The exterior is okay, but it's extremely outdated. Mr. Al Shamari's plan is to simply renovate the existing structures. The footprint of the house and the garage are not being changed at all. The house itself is within 99% of the variance from Middle Lake Road and 96% from Paramus. The only other variance is for the existing garage, which is, as I said, it's not being rebuilt. It's being rehabbed. The footprint will be exactly the same. He intends to keep... There's a pool in the back. He intends to keep the pool in the exact same footprint and rehabilitate that as well. As I said, he purchased the house last October. Mr. Al Shamari has two young kids. He got this great opportunity to purchase this house out of tax foreclosure, rehabilitate it. He's going to be living there. This isn't going to be a rental or anything like that. He's going to be living there with his family. He does intend to add a second story onto the house. That's in... I mean, that conforms with the neighborhood of that stretch of Paramus. There are several houses there that have been recently renovated and are two-story homes. So, ultimately, without a variance, Mr. Al Shamari cannot rehabilitate a derelict property. And as I said, he's not going to be changing the footprint of it at all.
That's a good question.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Mr. Altman, what is the trigger that makes this remodeling proposal so substantial that it requires it to come to the ZBA?
Adding a second story increases the non-conformities on the property. So, during zoning compliance, that's what we caught.
And what is it that is in violation?
Well, there's front setback, side yard, and then there's garage issues, and then it's a non-conforming lot of record.
But the two-story makes it worse?
Technically, yes.
And what's...
That increases the...
It's an expansion.
It's an expansion of a non-conformity.
Okay.
It's more square footage.
Other than...
I get it. I just didn't know what we relied on in this particular instance.
Yeah, because the footprint is not changing.
The volume of the non-conformity essentially has increased. As it relates to the dimensional distances from Middle Lake, Paramus, and the two buildings, there's nothing there that's making the existing conditions more impactful or worse.
Yeah, the dimensions we relied on were the existing site plan, because that's... He is not changing that footprint. So, that's the dimensions I went off when I looked at the plans during zoning compliance.
So, and perhaps one way to look at it is this is bringing the record of a non-conforming use...
Correct.
Into record.
And we wouldn't issue a building permit if it violated the ordinance. That's in our zoning ordinance. So, we can't issue a permit.
Mr. North or Mr. Al Shamani? One question that I had when looking at it and looking at the footprint, understand that the buildings are... And maybe in part, this is a question, Mr. Altman. Buildings are staying the same. However, the second story cantilevers out towards Paramus, which isn't unusual from an architectural point of view, but it comes closer to the road, not the foundation. And then the front porch, there's currently a front stoop, and now the front porch becomes a covered front porch or a covered front stoop. Am I interpreting that correctly, that the foundation stays the same, but the second story cantilevers out a little bit? Brian, does that change our publication or the front setback? It's based on the foundation?
It is based on foundation.
Okay, despite the fact that the front porch has a roof over it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to say, that was my understanding of how that worked.
And then the other question I had, again, maybe it goes to Brian or our building department, is the existing garage is about 7.8 foot from the house. Our ordinance requires a 10-foot separation. It's my understanding, and I'm not an expert, it's my understanding that we follow the state fire code. And perhaps Alan or others on the board are more familiar with it. The state fire code, I believe, has a 10-foot separation between buildings. Are we in...
I think it's five.
Is it five?
At least in the past, that's... We had a previous member of the ZBA who was a building official. He knew it was five.
Do you have experience with that as a builder?
No, I think it came up on Deer Lake Road behind the racket club there on one case. And there, they had to do some fireproofing of the overhangs and stuff like that. But I can't recollect right now whether it's five or 10.
Yeah, we've had it come up on lake lots, you know?
Am I right to assume that if the board was to consider this, that particular variance, that they'd still have to comply with the building codes and the department inspections?
Exactly.
Is the pool in compliance with that?
The structure that he's tearing down is eight, so...
Yeah, it's... The pool is in compliance.
Is it?
How is it that the structure is there as a non-conformity? Was it built and then zoned? Or was it given variances?
Throughout this...
Or none of the above?
Oh, yeah, it's never been given variances. That's why it's here. But otherwise... But otherwise, this whole plat of streets south of the village, almost every lot is nonconforming for even R1A. So, you know, anybody who wants to do an addition or anything like that, they tend to have to come to the ZBA. We've had some from time to time. So, it's just the nature of these lots being slightly smaller than our lot minimums, and that's, the entire plat is like that.
The inequity there was created by the township.
Yes, create, that's exactly right.
We've had a number of zoning cases, the one directly to the north of this, right across Middle Lake Road was a case in recent years, and then down the street from it. And to the west, we had a new house built. Back to Thandera Park, it's lots of nonconformity, and people trying to improve and bring the value up in the neighborhood. It's cost a lot of houses to come before us.
I have another question, just related to your drawings and the foundation in the front. Is, is on sheet two of your submission set, your architectural set, it shows on the front of the house a new, unexcavated foundation that's coming out. Well, it says about 10-foot coming forward of the house, but it doesn't show any house being built on top of that. And I'm just wondering why you're building a new foundation coming out 10-foot?
Is that for the front porch?
I was puzzled.
Well, if you look at the elevations a few pages later of the front porch, the front porch appears to be just kind of a stoop in the middle, just a center porch in the middle.
You mean the existing porch?
Well, the new porch, if you look at the elevations on sheet six.
The left elevation?
Proposed front elevation, just shows a center stoop, like you said.
Shows a center stoop, so, but the foundation on that, on that sheet two shows a large foundation. On the back, you show a similar foundation, but then the elevations show a larger covered porch in the back, so that makes sense, but I just...
An increase in the basement size?
Well, it says unexcavated.
Okay. So, okay, so, Akeel is telling me, and he can speak for himself, but there's, apparently, there's been an updated version of the building plans that removes that?
Yeah, we updated the...
Could you come to the microphone, just so we make sure we can pick you up on TV?
My name is Akeel Alshomari. The architect updated that section because they said we couldn't have a 10-feet, so there, there already existing a porch, so we're just staying with that. We're not, we're not adding that part of the 10-feet, but the rear, we are.
So, so the elevations are probably more accurate than this foundation, but I just didn't want, when I see a foundation that doesn't make sense to me, I think, boy, are they gonna try and build something at a future date?
No, we're not doing anything in the front, at all, just except the stairs, the steps, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Altman.
And the elevation's still the same.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Eppich, go ahead.
I basically, I was gonna reiterate again about the, since it's a covered porch, and, you know, the front steps are coming out, that doesn't, he doesn't have to change the variance based on that porch?
No, steps in concrete are flat, it's considered called, it's called flat work, that's not subject to our...
Just a few meetings ago, we talked about, when you put a covering over it, it becomes part of the structure.
That was on the backside, though.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, I wanna hear the distinction, too, 'cause that's my memory.
Well, where, where he's got the actual posts, it doesn't change, it still doesn't change the footprint of the home. He's already got a porch already.
Yeah, we had a deal, again, where we had a backyard deck, and it made a difference that it was being covered, because then all of a sudden, it was structure.
Yeah, and so...
How is this different?
Because this, the current stoop that's there already is protruding, and so, this is essentially the exact same dimensional standard, at least when myself and the building official looked at these plans.
Am I, am I remembering that previous case accurately to say that it was not only adding a roof, but it was adding three-season walls?
Well, maybe, but we were told that it was the roof that was the trigger.
It was already a structure, so that's why enclosing it didn't make any difference, because it was already considered a structure.
Right.
And I guess that's what I'm getting at, why, why wouldn't this be considered a structure? And I guess I, from the drawing of the existing porch to the new porch, to me, it looks like the new porch is larger.
It sounds to me like, from the building department, when they looked at it, there was a foundation already there for the existing porch, and the foundation became the dictator of part of the house. Whereas, what we looked at the other day was a wood structure on the ground, and then it had poles supporting part of the house, basically. That became what we were looking at and approving as, okay, it's already there, it's part of the house, we'll let him move forward.
My, my understanding is, is when we get to the 42-inch footings, those are the points that their setbacks go to, is the 42-inch footings. Because brick pavers, concrete can be poured right on the ground, so we don't govern any of that, but the 42-inch footings in this front porch appears to have its own 42-inch footing already existing, and I think that's what's establishing the conformity to just leave it as it is and not expand it.
The case that we were talking previously was a wood deck, which would make that different.
Right.
So, process kind of thing. I know that before I recently came on the ZBA, that oftentimes, when you see things that are presented for variance, and they may overreach, or there may be some part of it that you could push back on some of those, and I hear some of these concerns, not necessarily the porch, but the overhang that you had, is this something that we should be considering molding, or just make a straight-up decision?
I, I was, as related to my few questions about the front of the house, architecturally, I think it's, it's typical. What I try and also make sure that we're diligent about is advertising correctly. We have the ability, if something is advertised, we, as a, as a board working with an applicant, can make it less than what's advertised, but we can't, in this case, we advertise it for X number of feet from Paramus Road. If, if the second floor was to count, we would've actually had to say, hey, it's actually a closer setback, so that would've theoretically re-triggered a new advertisement, so that the public was aware of it. What, what Brian has clarified for me is, it's based on the foundation, not on the second floor, so it was advertised correctly.
It seems to me that the inequitable situation here is the zoning, and particularly appreciative of the goal here, I know that it's a number of the homes in this neighborhood that are dated and need to be revisited, and obviously, this is one of them. I don't, I know the neighborhood, I go through the neighborhood, I know that there's a significant diversity of architectural styles, sizes and styles, so I don't, I, I think this is not self-created, where dimensional requirements or variances requested are reasonable. And this is something the applicant created, or even the prior property owner, this is something we created, so for that reason, I would move to grant the requested variances in case twenty-five dash zero-one-four. And I would support that.
We have a motion, we have supporters, any discussion on the motion, or any questions? Brian, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Zerrig?
Yes.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppich?
Yes.
Or Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Congratulations. What we ask you to do is, is to continue to work closely with the township, with the building department, to make sure all your permits are intact, and again, it's premised on what was discussed at the meeting, what was presented in your packet, so we're looking forward to seeing the new structure.
Thank you very much.
We should get straight on the new plans, or something that you...
Yeah, the basement foundation, we'll get updates.
We need to make sure that our approvals are based on that representation.
I already have, I got it online.
Okay.
Welcome to Clarkson, Akeel.
Yeah, we're looking forward to having you.
Yeah, I work with the building department. Mr. Moran, he'll take care of it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Great. Gentlemen, with that, it ends our new business portion, our two cases. We'll move into section H, approval of the minutes. We've got the minutes of August 6, 2025, where in the packet, posted online or in front of us as well.
There was one change that I made, or suggested to Brian, during the very last part, it said it would require, before they could do anything further, it would require a visit to the building department, and I think he meant a permit from the building department.
Yeah, as in regard to concrete.
So, hold on one second, I'll find it for you. I just wanted to know I read the thing.
Do we have to wait and have that corrected, or is it just...
No, we can...
I've already corrected it.
Approve, approve based on that.
Change.
Yeah, I've corrected that.
Now, I can't find it.
Page six, towards the bottom.
Page six.
Yes, record for board member Wallace.
Mr. Altman stated that concrete requires a visit to the building department.
Yeah, it's changed to...
A permit from the building department. With that change, I'd move to approve the minutes.
Of August 6, 2025?
Yes.
House support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Minutes of August 6 are official. We now remain on an open meeting, we have discussion. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say, I commend you for, now, for stepping out for the other case, but I don't think it was truly warranted. I hate to see your name all over social media, so...
I appreciate that.
It was, it was a good decision on your part.
I appreciate that. It, you know, it's, we run a public process, and I think it's important to be transparent, so thank you. Any other discussion?
None.
With that, I would move to adjourn.
Yeah.
Support.
Support.
Six, fifty-six.
Six fifty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.